Leading order, ask if you can give me a statement, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. DeHaid, ask if you can call the roll, please.
David Burris?
Here.
Ray Eckerbee?
Here.
Bill Lukens?
Here.
Bob Nelson?
Here.
Ron Richards?
Here.
Allison Ritterwood?
Here.
Ray Braumey?
Present.
Caitlin Turner?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a quorum. I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda. Say that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the agenda is approved. And I remind each one on the council, if there is any conflict of interest with any item that we're voting on tonight, I would ask you to ensure that the entire council knows prior to voting. You have in your packages, three sets of minutes from the March 16th regular council meeting and two special council meetings on the 26th and the 1st of April. I would ask for a motion to approve all of those minutes.
I make a motion to approve minutes A through C. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from those three meetings. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, minutes are approved. You have in your packages, under claims, bills in between of $91,106.14. I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve bills in between the amount of $91,106.14.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the bills in between are approved. We have also in your packages, current claims for $102,672.93. I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the current claims for $102,672.93.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the current claims. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, current claims are approved. In your packages are Wells Fargo credit card charges for $3,860.28. I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve Wells Fargo credit card charges for $3,860.28.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the credit card charges. Are there any questions or comments, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is communication from the public. Are there any communications from the public? I see none. Moving on. The next item on our agenda is a shedco update. Andrea, are you here? We'll move on. And I'd ask for, we do have a public hearing at 7:10 PM. So as we move on, I'd like to cover the personnel actions. And we can prove personnel actions A through P.
I make a motion to approve personnel actions A through P.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve personnel actions A through P. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those actions are approved. We'll move on to committee reports. Administrative and Finance, Bob and Caitlin.
Because of the Easter holiday, the Admin Finance meeting has been moved to this Wednesday, 1 o'clock. And I believe we're going to try our first Zoom meeting. Is that correct, Mayor?
That may, or may not be correct. We were going to try Zoom tonight and apparently there's been some issues and problems with it. So we'll wait and see.
Okay.
And get that word out once we get the bugs worked out.
All right. Thank you.
The Airport Advisory Committee, Bill.
Okay, the Airport Advisory Committee did not convene for their rescheduled meeting on March 30th because of the COVID-19 crisis. However, the following important information was exchanged via email and telephone between Ned Jensen, Mayor Cotty, myself, and Administrator John Greckery. First of all, there were approximately 45 flight operations at the airport in March. The airport sold $2,935.03 worth of aviation fuel in the month of March. Airport Manager Ned Jensen notified us that he has moved his retirement date from November to August. Item four, K L J engineers have informed us that it appears there is language in the recently passed stimulus bill that provides for 100% federal funding through the FAA Airport Improvement Program for 2020 entitlement grants. This means that the design of the hangar project could move forward with no cost share to the state or city. If this were accurate, it would save the city about $4,500 on the design of the 10-unit T-hanger project. The construction project is contingent upon the proceeds from the PLS mining contract. Lastly, planning is proceeding for the June 6th family fly-in event, but it's taking into consideration restrictions and possible postponement or cancellation because of the COVID-19 crisis. Our next meeting will be Thursday, April 30th at 8:00 AM. It's currently scheduled at the Hot Springs Airport. This may change, be changed to the Mueller Center. And if that doesn't occur, it will be reflected on the city calendar.
Okay, thank you. Looking for Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District, Bronn?
I'll be to report. I don't know whether it will be.
Okay, thank you. Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Craig?
We did not have a meeting and I don't know when we'll have one.
Okay.
I tried to email her, but no way.
Okay. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Allison?
Oh, we canceled our last meeting and then decided to cancel this meeting as well since there's not much going on there. They are working on putting some flooring on the upstairs. So they are still doing some of that work. We plan on our next meeting, to make sure that it happens. We're not sure if it'll go through Zoom or what will be going on at that point, but that will be in main.
Okay, thank you, Allison. Parks Recreation, Beautification, and Cultural Development, Dave. And I may have to interrupt you if your report is long.
Should be fairly short.
Okay.
Parks are recommended this past Wednesday, reviewing some of the modifications for the basketball hoops in the court in the park. We'll be doing some work there inside at the MRF, doing some of our own modifications. Means we can't seem to find anything that's going to fit the way our design is. We've looked at some of the destruction that was done during the fiber optics. We are moving forward with that, waiting for a meeting. And pretty much that is it in a nutshell. Our next meeting will be at the first Wednesday of this following, coming month. And if anything comes up, as far as the dog park or any of the other parks, we'll be letting you know on the city's website.
Okay, good. Thank you. Very good timing. We approach 7:10. We'll go ahead and open the hearing. We're at a public hearing for the use permit on review. James D. Rhodey owner and Michelle Adcock tenant to operate a home preschool daycare at 2142 Minicotta Avenue in Hot Springs. I will go ahead and call that hearing to order now. And I would ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this operation of a home preschool and daycare. Michelle, are you here?
Yes.
Would you like to come up and just kind of share your vision with the council, please? Aye.
Um, I guess, does anybody have any questions? I've been doing preschool slash childcare for over 30 years of my life. So, um, it's nothing new to me.
Ms. Revia, this time, due to the virus, what are you planning on opening? And how are you going to do a procedure with less than, you know, 10, I guess, total 10 of your partners in your care?
Um, I have a basis that I would open with as soon as approved. Um, I have six families who need care right now. I have one that I've actually been doing preschool with over the phone for the past three weeks. Um, because his dad wants him to go kindergarten in the fall and he wants him ready. So we've been over the phone preschooling for the last three weeks. And I have all the CDC guidelines. I have stuff prepared for, you know, disinfectants, isolation, stuff like that.
Do you have 10 clients at this time that are?
I have six that would be willing to start.
And is it just going to be you by yourself? Are you going to have an assistant or anything like that?
I have a friend of mine who helps me out, witnesses all over and done with because she is 71. Then my daughter, since she's not in school at this time, she would help me out until school starts back up in the fall. And then she would help me before and after school.
So with the count of three operators, you being the main operator and six kids, that puts you at nine. Are you going to hold it at that number or are you going to try to push the 10?
When all this COVID-19 is over and done with, I would, I would like to have 10.
Okay.
To be able to make my bills and stuff like that.
Yeah, it has to be possible, I understand.
Yep.
Okay, are there any other questions from the council?
I've heard some commentary about the lack of fencing or like the construction type mesh kind of degree fencing in the back. Is there any plans to fence in anything in the future?
The green mesh is the fence right now and that is because there is a wall there. There will be, I don't want to utilize the front just because of the busy street. If in the future I do decide there would be fence that I would have to go through gym, throw them out and stuff and put that in. Um, the fence in the back, a friend of mine put that in to where it rolls out when we're outside and then I roll it back up when we go in so parents can pick up. But I don't want parents driving in when we're outside.
So they'd be picking it from the back in the alley?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a couple. I noticed, I drove by yesterday and you have the public notice sign posted, so thank you for that. And then the other requirement is to send certified letters to everybody within 200 feet, I believe.
Yep.
Have you done that?
Yes.
Has anybody responded back?
Nobody's responded. I even mailed one to my landlord.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you.
I think we left their hand up. They need to come up here.
Let me just switch that off before we go.
Thank you, Carl.
Ms. DeHaid, while they're doing that, do we approve this tonight or is this going to be on the next agenda?
Uh, we can approve it tonight.
Okay.
My name is Graham Far. I currently live just over here, but I'm actually in the process of putting an offer in on the house next door. Um, can you speak up a little bit, please? Yeah, absolutely. So I'm in the process of putting an offer in on the house that is next door to the proposed property. The only major concern that I would have if I were to purchase the house is that that alley is one-way in and out. It does not loop. There's two, three garages back there. So I guess traffic in and out of that alley would be my biggest concern. I'm all for free enterprise and what you're doing, like all for that. But it's kind of a, the location's kind of top to spark traffic because you've got Minicotta, which is a main thoroughfare to the state home. A lot of people use it to go to and from and up the hill to the school. And then the alley being one-way in and out might be a little congested. Again, not that I'm against the preschool daycare, not, that's just one concern I have or I think any buyer would have who would be looking at that property. So I guess that's, that's really my only concerns.
Okay, anyone have any?
I've got a question for Grant. Are you going to be here for the whole meeting?
Possibly.
Bob Nelson needs to talk to you about porn wall.
Oh, thank you. Go ahead. Pertaining to this situation, so everybody understands, this is a permit on review. Any issues that pop up over this at any point in time can be addressed to the city. And we will review it. Obviously, we're more than willing to work with you if issues do come up. We'll try to find solutions with you. But just so everybody out, out there understands, this is a use permit on review, so it is watched. At any point in time, we can review this once again.
So my last question is regarding kind of, if you have any license share or anything. As I'm looking at the word preschool, it's kind of making me catch my breath a little bit because schools are technically closed, you know, through. And so I'm just wondering, are you licensed as a daycare provider? Or is there any school part of it that you would really need to consider?
The preschool, I have my early childhood administration degree. And I run the same as the school, except like when they're out, I'm still old. I, I have to get a conditional use permit to get my state license. That's why I'm doing this, so I can, so I can take kids in that state group.
Under daycare?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments?
I have something. Want me to have one?
Okay.
Negative. My name is Valerie Henry. I'm not saying anything negative about any of that. I just would like to really express the need in this community for, I know what she's trying to do. I have been trying to get her to provide daycare for my grandson. You have to go through this process first to become certified by the state or going to the county to give assistance to daycare. And that's a huge problem in this community. I've been on waitlist for my grandson for a year and a half and it just doesn't happen. I, I know there's always going to be small obstacles, but I just would like to express the urgency for that in this community. And say that I'd love it if she could become state certified. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I see none. Any comments or questions from the council? Hearing none. We'll close the hearing at 7:20. Ms. Revia? Appreciate the, Michelle, your comments and coming tonight. And if counsel desired, I would ask a, or a commission, a motion to approve this use on review, this permit on review.
I'll make a motion to approve the use permit on review. James D. Rhodey owner, Michelle Adcock tenant, to operate a home preschool daycare at 2142 Minicotta Avenue in Hot Springs.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve this use permit on review. Are there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I would wish you success. Michelle, thank you for coming again. We'll move back to our committee reports. Planning and zoning, Commission Allison?
Planning and zoning will be meeting on April 15th, 6:00 PM. I'm assuming that one's going to be a Zoom as well.
Okay. Public safety, Bill?
Okay, I'll get the marathon award tonight.
Okay.
Public safety met on Wednesday, March 18th, 1:00 PM in City Hall. Present were Mayor Cotty, myself, Bob, Chief Close, Captain Wayman, John, and Safety Coordinator Lori Sherard. Under new business, regarding the fee and grants for the identified risks under the pre-disaster mitigation plan. The filing deadline has been pushed back and the process is on hold because of the current COVID-19 crisis. Action item list 20-02 regarding the school resource officer. It has been reported to the committee that the proposed budget for the school contains a $40,000 line item for a school resource officer, which represents approximately 60% of the cost of an officer. If this budget is approved by the school board, Chief Close will include the remaining 40% of the cost of a school resource officer in his 2021 budget. If approved by the council, we will pursue the COPS grant, which will cover a significant amount of the cost of the school resource officer for typically three years. The Public Safety Committee supports the pursuit of this. Item 20-03, Captain Wayman provided an update on the efforts to improve the mental health commitment process. The next step to be completed is a signed agreement between the qualified mental health professionals and the Fall River County Mental Health Attorney. Item 20-07, regarding the need for a drone ordinance, no action has been taken on that. And item 20-10, resolution is on this agenda to make 16th Street north of University Avenue a three-lane road. This request initiated in the School Board Safety and Security Committee. The road has been measured and determined to be wide enough to accommodate three lanes at a minimum of 14 feet each. And this solution should greatly improve traffic flow when picking up children and will only result in the loss of three parking spaces on the east side of 16th Street. Under new business, regarding Chief Close's police department report, the American Legion donated six, or I'm sorry, eight portable gas detectors to the police department. We want to thank them for that. Training has been provided for most of the officers, the reserve officers. These devices will greatly improve officer safety when responding to the reported propane leaks. The coffee with the cop at the Wandering Bison went very well. The new Durango that was ordered as part of this year's budget is in and the police will be submitting a request for proposal for the installation of equipment on that vehicle. The department is actively working the break-ins at West Side Storage. Regarding departmental activities for February and March, in February, the department responded to 379 calls. Not a complete breakdown of that, but half of that, there were seven vehicle accidents, 16 agency assists, 13 drug citations, 143 traffic stops, and 15 welfare checks. In March, our officers responded to 456 calls of that, or eight accidents, 15 agency assists, seven drug citations, 94 traffic stops, and 17 welfare checks. Also, under new business, the committee participated in a COVID-19 briefing for municipalities and county emergency management officials that was put on by South Dakota Department of Health. After the call, the committee discussed various prevention tactics to pursue by the police and other city departments. The committee discussed the flashing lights on University Avenue marking the school zone. Questions have come to the Public Safety Committee regarding the hours of illumination and should it be throughout the school day or just when children are coming to school and being let out. Discussions revealed that though there may not be, routinely be many children during the middle of the day, there is a possibility of them being present at any time. Because of that, the committee does not support changing the light from the existing timing configuration. Committee also discussed the need for the caution light at University Avenue and 19th Street. It was felt that it does provide some additional modification of the school zone and absent any other reason, we support leaving it in place. The committee discussed requests for stop and yield signs at various intersections on Baltimore Avenue and Detroit Avenue. These requests have been tabled because of current budget issues and the uncertainties associated with all the recent events. We reviewed the draft mitigation strategies for the Fall River Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan. This finalized our participation in the mandated five-year review of that plan. Our meeting ended at 3:00 PM. As a note subsequent to the meeting, I'd like to express our appreciation to the local businesses regarding conformance with Resolution 2020-11. As the mayor stated in the April 1st special meeting, he had directed the police department to perform random checks to assess compliance with Resolution 2020-11. Through April 5th, checks have shown 100% compliance regarding the number of people in places of business and only one occurrence in which proper social distancing was not being maintained. So again, we want to thank the business community of Hot Springs for taking this seriously. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, April 15th, 1:00 PM, probably at the Mueller Center and probably face to face.
Okay, thank you. Public Works, Bob and Ray.
Public Works met on March 31st at City Hall. No, we met down here at the Mueller Center. We maintained our physical distance. Mayor Cotty, Craig, Dave, Scott, Lori Sherard, Representative from Keaton, Hot Springs Beautiful. We had a private citizen join us and myself were present. Had a number of new business items. We discussed late fees and disconnects for customer utility bills due to the coronavirus outbreak. And the recommendation from the Public Works Committee is that the city waive the late fee penalties on customer utility bills and also discontinue terminating services on utility bills. We talked about Fresno Avenue and the need to have some tailings added at the end of the streets and possibly reshaping it to reduce the collection of water that's causing a problem there. a problem there. This will be added to the normal street and alley maintenance the city does every spring. We discussed Garden Street that will be used by the fire department vehicles during the Jennings Bridge replacements. The corner of Garden Street and the area of the bridge that crosses Fall River to the Brookside Apartments is currently a tight corner and needs to be improved. City staff will add fill material to the old irrigation ditch on the west side of Garden Street adjacent to the bridge to widen the corner. We discussed vacating with utility easements, a number of alleys in the 26th Street Water District. Scott was asked to have everything in place to have the vacating of these alleys on the April 20th council agenda. David talked a little bit about some repair works that's needed in the parks because of Golden West. We also discussed that. The city and Parks, the city street and Parks Departments have made a list of items that need to be repaired as a result of Golden West Fiber Optic project that is still in progress. Golden West has been contacted about the repairs, and they said these types of things, which are part of every construction project, will be addressed when Phase 2 of the project begins around May. I talked about having the city look into installing a light at the end of Sixth Street. It gets off of dark down there. There just isn't a lot of lights. There was a question about whether that's city property or whether that's private property. So John was going to have the city look into that, and if it's city property, see if we can't get a light added down there to brighten things up a little bit. John talked with the committee about a letter he sent to the state home requesting that our cities, requested the city be permitted to obtain approximately 20,000 cubic yards of coarse rock material for use at our city's Corps of Engineer Fall River Flood Control Channel for stream bank and basin stabilization maintenance. The material would be at no cost to the city, and the committee agrees with John's request to the state home. A resident asked the committee to provide additional clean rock along sulfur spring streets. The city has done some work, but the resident feels more fill is still needed. They also asked the city to look at an exposed sewer line they feel is being deteriorated by weather. Craig, Dave, and Bob will look at the concerns raised by the resident. Craig had a number of questions. He's been asked by city residents about mobile food truck vendors using the public space across from the Evans Pudge. How does the city intend to use that space? He asked if Fuller County Landfill will be accepting tires for free disposal this year. John said there won't be an opportunity to dispose the tires for free this year. Craig also asked about a number of properties along Evans Street that don't comply with city ordinance, and if those properties will be addressed by the city. Items one and two, or one and three, will need further discussion. Old business, Scott has been working on removing an RV camper parked on property on German Street that doesn't comply with city ordinance. Scott contacted the owner of the property and was told the situation would be corrected. And after I put together the reports, that trailer is gone. So thank you to the property owner for working with the city and getting that taken care of. I've also heard from one of the property owners out there, they appreciate the work that Scott did and the support that the city put behind getting that taken care of. We're still discussing options for long-term management of the brush piles at the landfill. John mentioned the small trench version of the air curtain burner that we've been talking about that would be less expensive. Dave's familiar with this method of burning and feels it's possible city staff could build a workable version. The trench version of an air curtain burner will be considered along with the larger air curtain burner, and that discussion will continue. The West Oak Building, John is hopeful there will be additional requests for how to proceed with the West Oak Building for the committee to discuss at our April 14th meeting. Any information the city receives will be included in the packet for public review in John's office. Mayor Cotty would like to present to the public as soon as possible the reasoning behind the need for a suspended sidewalk along North River Street between the Jennings Bridge and the general area of Pistol Paddies because of the coronavirus and the need for physical distancing. The how of sharing that information is being worked out. Justin Gosman spoke with the committee about using Zoom for the presentation to the public. When the city is ready to go with the presentation, the public will be notified about dates and Keep Hot Springs Beautiful spoke with the committee about the pods along Main Street, which going forward, I recommend we refer to as bump outs, the term used by the South Dakota Department of Transportation. The important point to remember is bump outs are a DOT requirement for pedestrian safety and will be a part of the road reconstruction project. The question this council will need to decide is if those bump outs should be filled with concrete or dirt. If the bump outs are filled with dirt, the plantings will need to be state guidelines for height restrictions. If this council decides to allow for plantings in the bump outs, Keep Hot Springs Beautiful will be needed to maintain those plantings. The city simply doesn't have the staff to maintain the bump outs. The final decision for a decision about what type of fill will be in the bump outs is July 1st of this year. More realistically, the council will need to make that decision sooner. If the council is agreeable to plantings in the bump outs, more coordination with Keep Hot Springs Beautiful will be necessary. The bump out discussion will continue. And the last old business item is a fence up on the state home's boundaries. City crews are expecting to begin work around the beginning of May to replace that fence. The state home will provide the materials for the fence, and the city will provide the labor. Did I miss anything?
I have a question. Putting dirt on Garden Street on that corner, have you looked at that corner? That irrigation pipe is right on the edge of the road. To be able to put dirt on that, you're going to have to cover up that irrigation ditch. There won't be water that gets to go through there.
Yes, and it's my understanding that irrigation ditch isn't being used anymore.
Okay.
Is that correct, John?
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, thanks, Bob.
Next public works meeting is scheduled for April 14th. We'll figure out where that's going to be, and we'll let the public know.
Southern Hills Economic Development, Caitlin.
We currently don't have a meeting, I believe. Scheduled.
Okay. The Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, there are several things. The golf course is open. They are using some specialty rules as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. We're allowing one person per cart unless it's a family member, then they can ride double. There's a ball riser in the cups to prevent the ball from going completely in so people don't have to touch the pin. They've removed all the bunker rakes. Again, those have metal handles, and there's been caution tape placed on the ball washers to remind people of not to use them. We're establishing no more than 10 people in the clubhouse, and that is extended to gatherings outside the clubhouse on the veranda and the gazebo. Of course, bathrooms, the bathrooms on the course will remain closed. Everyone's being reminded of the social distancing of six feet, and the carts after being used are being sanitized. Jason is also looking at his maintenance staff to help reduce expenses during this time. He's also limiting the number of maintenance crews that are needed. He's staggering work times and limiting maintenance on the course. Just a quick note, Jason pointed out that of all 50 states, only 14 have closed their golf courses. 35 of the states are still operating in some form, and one state is pending. And so we will watch on a day-to-day basis how the virus progresses in our area. I know that our course is a popular destination course for people that are out of state and also out of our community. One other thing, you do have on the agenda tonight, we'll be getting to that as a motion, to look at the big click deals that Jason had intended to use for advertising. Because of the health situation, we just feel comfortable in not taking part in that to reduce those costs, so we don't have a bunch of advertising going out in the event that we do have to reduce the amount of play or close the course. So that will be considered later on. With that, we know that the course is providing a good outlet for some of the people in our community, and we appreciate the efforts that Jason has made to keep it as safe and healthy as possible. That said, we'll move on to Volunteer Fire Department. Ron.
That's 7:00 p.m. Extra for the evening, and possibly volunteer for.
Okay, thank you. Under our ordinances tonight, we have our second reading of Ordinance 1210, and that's the Mammoth Site Planned Unit Development Ordinance. I would ask for a motion to approve Ordinance 1210, second reading.
I make a motion to approve the second reading, Ordinance 1210, and ordinance revising title, that's 15, right, Ramenoodle? Land usage chapter 155 zoning code to revise 15503 map, 155032 F1, title PUD number one, Mammoth Site 15507, zero board of adjustment. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the second reading of this ordinance. Are there any questions, comments from the council? Hearing done, I'd ask Ms. Teef you'd call roll.
David Burris?
Yes.
Ray Eppity?
Yes.
Phil Lukins?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
No.
Allison Ritterbusch?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Caitlin Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that ordinance is approved, and thank you, Preston. Being first out of the gate, I know it was a few bumps and bruises along the way, but we appreciate your patience with us, and I think we've got a good plan to develop the Mammoth Site, a very important part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cotty and all the council.
We also have on the agenda second reading of Ordinance 1212. This is the emergency ordinance to address the public health crisis, and we want to implement certain measures which have been deemed essential to slow the community spread of the COVID-19 coronavirus. I'd accept a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance 1212.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance 1212, an emergency ordinance to address a public health crisis by implementing certain measures which have been deemed necessary to slow the community spread of coronavirus COVID-19.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the second reading. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have one question. Given the governor's new executive order today that extended the date, I believe, of her first executive order, she not only changed her language from should to shall, but I believe she extended the effective date of the executive order to May 31st. Do we need to adjust the effective date of this ordinance? And I apologize, I thought I had it in front of me. It seems like our effective date was sooner than that, or ending.
Oh, the ending, okay. The bar end date is maybe earlier.
Okay, so we're good.
Okay, good point. And of course, that can change as the situation changes, but that would have to be done by the council vote. Are there any other discussion? Hearing done, Ms. Teef, I'd ask if you'd call the roll, please.
David Burris?
Yes.
Ray Eppity?
Yes.
Phil Lukins?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
No.
Allison Ritterbusch?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Caitlin Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
I didn't want to change my first name.
That ordinance is approved, and we're trusting that the Hot Springs, that the Fall River Herald Star will get that published so that we can go into effect. Appreciate all the council's work on this. It's a very, very important measure to protect our community. Thank you. You also have in your packages, Ordinance 1211, and that's a fine and bond schedule for the city of Hot Springs, and that provides some pretty hefty fines for our fireworks. But please remember, the fireworks have been extended, and they can be shot off. So I'd ask for a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 1211.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 1211, an ordinance amending the fine and bond schedule for the city of Hot Springs. Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve that ordinance. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I have a comment. Right now, we can't get the police department to pick people up off the off-streets of Hot Springs and use this.
Craig, will you go into the microphone just a little bit? I can't hear you very well.
We cannot get the police department to pick people up on the off-roads, the main streets of Hot Springs and use this. I could probably bet anybody money since 2014 when we revised this then, that there hasn't been one ticket written off the main streets of this. And now you're thinking that they're going to drive those streets and use this then? I think we're wasting our time. That's my opinion.
Any other comments?
I disagree with Councilman Romi. I'm not going to argue with Councilman Romi. I disagree. We specifically made this, asked for this change because of the reasoning for the fine would be because of shooting off fireworks because of a fire danger. So it's not just a matter of an individual deciding, I want to shoot fireworks. It would be during a community, when the community fire danger is very high or extreme. So we had our reasoning, we have discussed this for several months. So I think our reasoning is sound, and we can disagree probably quite a long time, Councilman Romi, on whether or not the police will enforce this. So that's all I got to say about that.
Any other comments? Hearing done, I'd ask Ms. Teef you'd call the roll, please.
David Burris?
Yes.
Ray Eppity?
Yes.
Phil Lukins?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
No.
Allison Ritterbusch?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
No.
Caitlin Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that first reading has passed. Move on in our agenda to resolutions. As we talked about earlier at public safety meeting, a resolution to add, change lanes of travel on 16th Street north of University Avenue at the high school. I'd ask, motion to approve that resolution that's in your packages, 2020-12.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-12, a resolution to add and change lanes of travel on 16th Street north of University Avenue at the high school.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2020-12. Is there any discussion? Again, public safety recommends approval?
Yes, we do.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do have an item for discussion, and this is, would have been a resolution to limit amending Ordinance 12-12 as part amending ordinance 12-12 as part of the city of Hot Springs specifically. The discussion has been on salons, barber shops, and so forth, to demand that they be closed. And I would like to open that, if any of the council does have a comment to make on that, please do so at this time.
Mayor Cotty?
Yes.
Since I kinda opened that door for discussion, I do have a comment. During the discussion and prior to the vote on the first reading of ordinance 1212 on April 1st, I brought up the possibility of adding to the ordinance language calling for the closure of spas, salons, and other such close contact businesses. Discussion ensued that a resolution would likely be the best way to address such an issue. Since that meeting, I have given the request by those business owners to close them down, much thought, and have come to the conclusion for the following reasons, that it is not the responsibility of the city to make that directive through either ordinance or resolution for the following reasons. One, based on our current understanding, whatever federal and state economic assistance that may be available is not reliant upon municipalities' closure orders. Two, the executive order issued by Governor Noem calls for every South Dakotan as individuals and business owners to take steps to stop the spread of the virus. When distancing, barriers, and modified business models cannot be incorporated, the only option may be closure. Each of us must make a contact-by-contact risk assessment, not only for ourselves, but our families, employees, and clients. When we determine that risk, that risk to be unacceptable as a business owner, again, closure may be the only option. Fourthly, for the city to mandate the closure of an entire class or group of businesses, we would be inferring that no individual owner or operator has the resources and innovation to appropriately manage the COVID-19 risk in their business operation. An ordinance or resolution implementing that ordinance would, it seems in my opinion, negate the efforts of the individual businesses by preventing or delaying the restart of their businesses with those new safeguards in place without appropriate action by the city council. Therefore, I would vote no on resolution. If this resolution 2020-13 comes to a vote, I would have to vote no. So thank you for causing us to more thoroughly consider this issue.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments from the council?
I have some. My understanding of what was asked of the council at the last special meeting was to address two issues. And the request was that we mandate closures for two reasons. One is to provide those businesses, to make it easier for them to apply for financial assistance, because we told them they had to close. And that's the first one I'd like to address. And because the individual that spoke about that first isn't here, I want to say publicly that we do take those requests and those concerns seriously. It was Risa, Ressa, am I saying that correctly? That first raised the issue about mandatory closures, so that her business would be in a better position to qualify for financial assistance. And that concern I take seriously. That one is legitimate. She provided an email to support why she was asking for those mandatory closures. She provided this to Misty, so Ressa, Misty did forward it on for the council's review. And she's speaking of a particular situation, that grants would be available at one time, a thousand dollar grant, to qualify applicants must live in a state or county that has mandated the closure of nonessential businesses. So she had something to back that up. But as part of that discussion, she and Allison did some back and forth, because my understanding is Allison finds herself in the same situation. So the aid that's available is evolving. It's a daily thing. So I did some looking myself to see what might be available out there, and it all revolves around the CARES Act, a section of that specifically pandemic emergency unemployment compensation. Provide unemployment to self-employed workers who don't traditionally qualify. Include supplemental benefits, provide extra work benefits. That information can be found at the Balance Careers website. Governor Noem, when she was addressing South Dakota Today, talked about the covid.sd.gov website that provides all kinds of assistance. SDreadytowork/covid19.com provides assistance for small business and self-employed folks. So as Bill said, if the resolution was in front of us, I would vote no for it. I think there is that assistance that's available. Everyone recognizes that this is evolving, and what businesses that traditionally would qualify, they need to expand it. There are other people that are hurting, and that assistance is out there for them. The other one, the trouble that frustrates me, is that we were asked to provide cover for businesses whose clients don't respect the difficult decision that they have to make. Rather than giving them flag, they should be thanking them for thinking enough about themselves first, and then as customers, to say, "I would love to have you in here, but I can't do that. It's not right for me, and it's not right for you. We'll get through this, we'll start doing business again together." So my request to those people would be, step up, do the right thing. Rather than looking for somebody to blame because you can't get that service provided, recognize why that service can't be provided, and it's the right thing to do. As a body, it's not our place to provide cover. While I respect the person's right to make that statement, I couldn't disagree more with them, that they somehow feel that's our responsibility to provide cover. It's not. So for those two reasons, if the resolution was in front of us, I wouldn't support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the council?
Yes, I agree with Bill and Bob both. To me, it sounded like they was more worried about if they're gonna make a living versus the safety of people. I mean, they did sound concerned sometimes, but it seemed like it's all about the mighty dollar to me, why they wanna just shut them down so they get unemployment. So I agree with those two. Comes worth, I'll vote no too.
Okay. Any other comments from the council?
Yeah, I couldn't disagree more that it's about the mighty dollar. I know from being a self-employed person, and both my husband and I are, that it was about trying to figure out the best way to keep yourself safe and your clients safe. And I know that it was super hard for them to try to make the decision. I was a little bit worried that some of the therapists and salon owners may not know what was going on, so I called everybody that I could think of, and it was true, not all the therapists knew that that was something that we were considering, or that had been brought forward. And that's one of the things that I worry about, that any type of resolution like that would mean that some people simply would not know that. But I was so impressed with everybody that I talked to about how worried they are about being the one that contracts it, starts it, anything. I'm nothing but thoroughly impressed by our small business owners here in town about how worried they really are about this. So I really wanted to get behind them and give them any support that we can, and I still feel like that they can, as a group, decide to do this and close down at a coalition, and know that they have the backing of the city, not by resolution necessarily or ordinance, but that we have, you have our backing, or at least mine, I can only speak for myself, that whatever you decide to do to close down, we will absolutely back that and support any decision you make. But it is going to be very hard to do that by resolution or ordinance. I feel like you have the ability to do it without us imposing that, and I also wanna leave you open to have the decision about when you get to start back up. And that was one of the things that they didn't, when I was sharing with people, some of my concerns, they didn't even think that they would have to wait for us to lift that. So they may feel very good that they're ready to go, and then we still have a week and a half before a council meeting, or we have to try to put together a council meeting to lift that. And so I still wanted to leave that right for them to be able to get back to work as soon as they possibly could. So I also am with what is being suggested regarding why we wouldn't necessarily go that way, but wanna know that you have my backing for any closure that you have to make, and I know how difficult that is to do.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Again, this was an item for discussion. Are there any comments from the audience? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close this discussion on resolution 2020-13. And move on to new business. First item is to authorize the finance officer to waive late fee penalties to city utility bills that are unpaid. And so I would ask for a motion to approve that waiving of the fees.
I make a motion to authorize the finance office to waive late fee penalties to city utility bills unpaid by the due date, and to also discontinue terminating services by disconnection on unpaid bills effective for a minimum of 90 days unless rescinded sooner by future action of the council.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to waive these fees. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Again, I remind everyone that this was discussed in Public Works, and the Public Works Committee recommends that this be passed, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I think it's an excellent thing to do as part of a city, that some that may be struggling as a result of not having employment, full employment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Also have before you, item B, motion to authorize the police department to apply for the Department of Homeland Security FEMA grant. That would be submitted to outfit a new vehicle. The approximate value of that grant would be $10,000, and this would be in the 2021 budget. I would ask for a motion to authorize the police department to apply for this grant.
I'll make a motion to authorize the police department to apply for the Department of Homeland Security DHS Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA State Homeland Security Program SHSP grant. Application will be submitted with a request to purchase this Dodge Durango grant award would be 100% reimbursement. The city would be responsible for outfitting the vehicle at an approximate cost of $10,000, potentially a 2021 expense.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the application of this grant. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have a motion before you to refund two secondhand license fees of $100. We did change that ordinance, and I would ask for a motion to authorize our finance officer to make those refunds.
I make a motion to authorize the finance office to refund two $100 2020 secondhand license fees due to the recent change in the city ordinance and licensing requirements, ordinance 1209.
Second.
It moved and seconded to refund those secondhand license fees. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I think I have abstained from this. I think my sister-in-law is one of them.
Okay, well, note that Councilman Romi is abstaining. Are there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Couple meetings ago, we approved the purchase of a QT POD model 4000 self-serve fueling terminal for the airport. Due to potential revenue losses due to the pandemic, we're asking the council to rescind that approval at this time.
I make a motion to rescind the 31620 council approval of the QT POD model M4000 self-service fueling terminal.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we suspend this purchase. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
One comment, our airport manager has been in contact with the QT folks, and one of the reasons we were acting on this now is we were gonna get almost $2,000 credit for the existing model. And given the current COVID-19 crisis, they are extending that offer at least a couple of months or a few months beyond the June deadline, so we've got a little bit of time that we can still take advantage of this once we understand our finances better.
Okay, great, and that's, that gives us more time to check those revenues too. Great. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You have in your packages the invitation to bid by Bro's Engineering, that's for Jennings Avenue Bridge Structure Replacement, includes such things as approach grading, curb and gutter, asphalt paving, and other incidentals. I'd ask for a motion to approve the authorization of Bro's Engineering to invite bids for that project.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Bro's Engineering Invitation to Bid, BRO80240018-1, PCM06V1 Jennings Avenue Bridge Structure Replacement, Approach Grading, Curb and Gutter, Asphalt Painting, and Incidentals.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this authorization. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
Council, if any, they're interested in drawings for that project, or if you take a reservation, contact the council, we'll let that happen.
Okay, thank you, thank you, John. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion is carried. And item F is a possible motion to authorize the Southern Hills Golf Course Superintendent Tanner into a trade agreement with Click Big Deals. Again, Jason, when he originally negotiated for this advertisement, we were not in the serious situation of according to the coronavirus pandemic, so he is asking that that be denied. And so I'd ask for a motion to authorize this, and then I'd ask for the council to vote to deny it.
And make a motion to authorize Southern Hills Golf Course Superintendent Jason Happy to enter into the trade contract with Click Big Deals, allowing for the sale of 40 vouchers good for 18 holes of play, in exchange for $12,000 in advertising. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to authorize this. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? And that, you know, as I think back on this, if nobody would have made the motion, this would have died, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
That's... That's bureaucracy at work. I'm sorry, I apologize.
At least it gave us a good chuckle. We need those every once in a while, right?
All those in favor signify by saying.
Mayor Coney? I'm glad that we did have the motion, so that we can have a discussion part of it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I would like to thank Jason for reconsidering it. We, as a city, have been asking our department heads to take a look and make sure that what they need to spend is truly what they need to spend. When Jason submitted this at the time, he felt like there was a good trade-off here, that by providing some 18-hole passes, we could generate some advertising revenue. And I appreciated him stepping up and saying, you know what, when I looked at it, this can wait. This doesn't need to happen right now. We shouldn't be spending potential money here. So I just want to thank him publicly. I appreciate the opportunity to vote against his original recommendation, but I wanted to acknowledge him. So thank you.
No, and I think that's well said, Bob. And, you know, one other consideration is that, you know, we are in a situation where we don't want a lot of intercity interstate travel. And this big clicks was designed to get people from out of the Hot Springs area down two hot springs to Clay Callow. So with that said, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The opposed have it. Motion fails. Moving on in our agenda, Finance Officer Report, Misty.
Thank you, and I apologize to those council members who did not have your monthly Finance Officer Report in your folders. I did email them out. They just weren't done in time for your package. It's been a little crazy. It's a little. So I'm sorry if you didn't get it on time, but I emailed it. And if anybody would like a hard copy, I've got some extras here. I did prepare the typical financial reports through the 31st of March. They include the year-to-date profit-loss summary report, the fund summary report, the cash balance report, and the investment reports. I will note that we're not seeing a significant decline yet, but we're about 30 days behind. So I imagine by April, we'll be having a different conversation. Amidst the fears and concerns surrounding COVID-19, our city is working hard to find new ways to continue to work and provide the needed services. Each of our departments and functions have implemented new rules and processes to guide operations outside of our normal. There's no doubt that the impact on our local economy is happening right now and will continue well into 2020. Although we really don't know what the total impact will be, I can tell you that we rely on sales tax for nearly one-third of our general fund operations. It's not just this one revenue source that will be impacted. I imagine our entire community is going to feel the impacts of this. The anticipated shortfall will have serious consequences for our budgets, and in an effort to prepare, the finance offices requested that all city departments be mindful of the current economic picture and limit spending to essential needs only at this time. Although the 2020 budget is already in place, that budget was determined with projected revenues that will undoubtedly fall short of expectations. We will continue to monitor and adjust spending as we can, and will be reviewing financial data and discussing our plans at the next and throughout the next admin and finance committee meeting and continue throughout the year. I did want to note the extraordinary importance of leadership in dealing with this pandemic. Thank you to our mayor, our council, our administration, and our department heads that are all being tasked with moving quickly and decisively. We're all in uncomfortable position of asking so many to sacrifice so much. There's no doubt that painful decisions and cuts will need to be made by all. I want to thank each of you for the extra time and attention you're taking to help our city make it through this difficult time. Without your leadership and guidance, we certainly would be lost. We've closed Evans Punch Mineral Springs, the library, the police department, and city halls to the public. At this time, full-time workers are still showing up and doing their dos and so much more, but we've had to temporarily lay off the number of part-time workers. We've suspended all recreation activities until further notice. No hiring is taking place for those activities at this time. Early on, we shared information with effective employees for unemployment insurance benefits, formerly known as unemployment, and the claim forms have been pouring in. At this time, we have not laid off or furloughed any full-time employees. One of the changes we're experiencing is the way in which we conduct our meetings. It's so important that we continue to meet and discuss city business, but we also need to minimize the risk of exposure to not only our council, but our citizens. The city set up an account with Zoom. We are going to try it for this meeting. We may continue to try it, but with any new things having hazards, problems, and so we're working through those. Hopefully, we'll expand the use of this software to include more than just council meetings, but more discussion will happen on that. I've been working to review and understand the impacts of the federal coronavirus relief bill recently passed by Congress, which includes the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act, FF-CRA, and the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, which the mayor referred to as CARES. The FF-CRA, which includes the Emergency Pay Sick Leave Act and the Emergency Family and Medical Leave Expansion Act, provides paid leave provisions effective April 1 and applies to leave taken between April 1 and December 31 of this year. The provisions include two weeks, up to 80 hours of paid sick leave at an employer's regular rate of pay where the employee is unable to work because the employee is quarantined pursuant to a federal, state, or local government, or the advice of a health order, or the advice of a healthcare provider, and/or experiencing COVID-19 symptoms and seeking a medical diagnosis, or two weeks, up to 80 hours of paid sick leave at two-thirds the employee's regular rate of pay because they're unable to work because of a bona fide need to care for an individual subject to quarantine. And again, that's pursuant to federal, state, or local government order, or the advice of a healthcare provider, or care for a child that for 18 years, they choose school or childcare providers closed or unable or unable to attend for reasons related to COVID-19. I'm working with our payroll software company to establish the means to track both emergencies sick leave covered by the act and the expanded paid family and medical leave pay should employ the impacted by COVID-19. As you know, the city has six council seats and the mayor position that were up for reelection this year. Nominated petitions were submitted by Bob Nelson for mayor, who is unopposed. Ward 1, two-year term, Larry Pratt, unopposed. Ward 2, two-year term, William Lucas, unopposed. Ward 3, two-year term, Johnny R. Huddleston, unopposed. Ward 3, one-year term, Wes Grimes, unopposed. Ward 4, two-year term, Deborah A. Johnston and Caitlin Turner. And Ward 4, one-year term, no petition, so will need no point in the future. The city will have only the one position on the 2020 municipal election for the Ward 4 two-year term ballot. The election is still scheduled for June 2, and we're encouraging voters to utilize the absentee voting process. Ascient T voting begins April 17 and runs through the 1st of June. Contact the Borger County Auditor's Office for additional information. I talked about the 2020 hang at the airport request work proposal. We haven't received any yet. And then the others, the livestock grazing, storing, and our feeding in areas A and B. The livestock grazing, storing, and feeding bid is due by April 20, and we'll have to look at the hang one and maybe go out for visit again, because we did not receive any. I am almost finished with the 2019 annual report and accompanying financial statements. I'm still on track to have those presented to the council by the first meeting in May. I started sending a number of work papers, roll forwards and analyticals, and the various reports to our auditors so they can start pulling their review and choose the items to test. I have been in contact with the auditors regarding their schedule, and at this time, they're still planning it the first week in May. However, they may not be present at our location as they have in the past. We'll continue to stay in contact with them, do whatever's necessary to get our reports done on time. Governor Noem granted the following days as administrative lead days, Friday, April 10, and Monday, April 13. In her email, she stated, and I'd like to repeat it here, "I truly believe that strong families create strong communities, and this Easter, I want to make sure you have a little extra time to invest in the people around you." I'm granting administrative lead April 10 and 13 to all state of South Dakota employees under the authority of the governor's office. I hope you'll take this time to rest and make memories with those you love. Thank you for the excellent work you do and your dedication to the people of South Dakota. Happy Easter. It's the policy of the city to follow the direction of the governor and state, and so therefore will be closed April 10 and 13. I mentioned some other ordinance revisions that have been put on the back burner in the last month. We're still working on a number of those. We need some input from some committees and some department heads, but we are still working to get a few of those revised, and I listed them out in my memo. March was another tough month. Thank you for all you do for our city. We'll remain strong and resilient, and I'm certain we'll not only recover, but we'll prosper, but it's going to take a little work. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Misty. John, city administrator report, please.
Well, it's been a busy time with COVID-19. There was four in three. They are getting a lot of work done on their other projects, flooring put in upstairs, painting the big slide is going to, it's a huge project, getting the main paint. Library has been closed and opened again, but they are currently doing curbside, do for Hiller Civic Center officially closed, but the Chamber of Commerce is still taking their walk-in, people oriented and by appointment, and we are using help facilities for various meetings. Gray, the cop course is open, there's a couple of cars, everybody can get out, go Some of the rec items are all left over until at least May. A lot of ordinances, resolutions to review and consider, and all the input came with it. Addition of two professional meetings. Suspended sidewalk project has been discussed here briefly. We do have a DOT agreement, we need to sit there and sue for provisions, but fortunately the university bridges are not part of that requirement for us. ISG has provided us an F A service proposal in a cost opinion for the construction of that suspended sidewalk system, Road Jennings Bridge, to possibly establish a patent to your consideration. We also just received the updated DOT drawings for the reconstruction work of highway between Highway 385 and 120. It's nice to see that they have upgraded a lot of the storm rankings that we've talked about to be a problem for our feelings. Hiller Civic Center, Hill thermal system has been a big time-consuming effort for a lot of people, a lot of our crews. Water link is fixed, the link is closed, not losing water. Balance of system has been unique, but we do have need on one side of the building or the other. We will have to do more in the future to complete the system, but we're going to wait until after the COVID-19 crisis fallout, maybe have a 2020 or 2019, produce additional work on that. We're acknowledged time mass, and done a lot of work with us on that system, and we've got it's running. Like this, we said our department heads have been advised to restrict their spending, essential spending only wherever possible. We did not know the full economic impact of this. Street department is still asked to work on alleys, repairs due to various complaints. Had some material pending on that, it's generally off the beach today. We've got Jennings Bridge project coming up, doubtful bids. There are pretty bitter, already listed on Brose Engineering websites. We should have to re-prepare the bids without bidding. We will receive to open up for the 20th this month. At that time, I will be suggesting we postpone the start of construction until at least September, so we might get a piece of our tours this season here. Brose is also opposed to do our bridge inspections in the required 2020, looking at their cross proposal, and that is seen in line of good value for what they're offering. Parks Department has started their spring cleaning, stepped up the repairs needed in various places, removal of limbs from the freedom trail, pre-weed emergency coming up, they're going to have to get that out. Removal office plan for May 8 has been rescheduled for Wednesday, August 19. They've also added the no alcohol sites to the roadside park there. Had more inspection today, fresh pile area, the other areas in that facility, like DNR, it all went well. We are accumulating trees and limbs and brush, which you'll learn that we do not take wood or trash in those piles. It's amazing today, there's a constant stream of people in and out of there, be hired out by the staff. We received over 100 new garbage tons, and they will be distributed to replace broken ones, have a particular broken garbage bin, they went right now. Tracy Bastian has been working on the Fall River channel improvement, his pilot program he's proposed, has to get solicitors quotes on that, we're also looking at a forest and service grant to help with some of that work, we have a gas to be agreed, secondary area that we have on the south side of the plunge along the river's edge there. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Lot going on. I guess, first of all, I'd like to thank you as a council. We've had some pretty difficult decisions to make here in the last couple of weeks of a very unusual situation, and I appreciate the dedicated research and well thought out. I think that we've done the best we could. We just need to keep praying that that number one case stays at one and that one person that's healed stays healed. I also want to thank the citizens of Hot Springs. Our spot checks show that people are taking this seriously, and I really appreciate that. But we're in for a long haul. Every time Governor Noem speaks, gives a daily press briefing, she makes mention that we are in for the long haul. And so we look like the latest models show that we'll peak sometime in June. And if you watch some of the larger cities, what that peaking means, that can be a very serious time. We in the Black Hills area have a limited amount of medical supplies compared to some of the larger cities. So that's why we need to continue to mitigate and keep that spread down as much as we can. And I think our community realizes that and is doing that. And obviously, as a council, we'll have to continue to keep monitoring the situation so that we can react quickly if changes need to be made to help mitigate the spread. I did sign a public health emergency recommendation letter that was circulated by the municipal league as a result of the failure of Senate Bill 191 to pass. And basically, what that is asking is that the governor would declare a public health emergency in South Dakota. The current authority that governs that goes back to 1939, and some of the legal scholars have concern that that's been untested and may not be adequate. Also, the method of enforcing that is quite cumbersome. For example, counties, there's confusion as to what authority a county has, and that leads to some concern, because we can have all of our businesses here in Hot Springs limited in people, practicing social distancing, but go out to Maverick Junction, and there's no authority to put any kind of limits on them, or Dangus store and dent, or, and other counties are facing the same thing. I know Pennington County is, I noticed it was business as usual as at some of the businesses along IV 385 this past weekend. So hopefully, that will authorize the counties to take some more aggressive action and ensure... So hopefully, that will authorize the counties to take some more aggressive action and ensure that those guidelines have some legal teeth behind them. And one other area that emergency declaration, at least the municipal league feels, it gives the city, the state, and residents a little bit more ease in obtaining federal relief. It might be one less swoop to have to jump through. Now that we've passed the ordinance, and it's been mentioned by Misty and John tonight, we've got some facilities that are closed. We've got some employees that we've got to deal with, and I've asked John and Misty to get with the department heads and develop a plan that's fair. We've got great employees. We don't want to penalize them, but we also want to give them the opportunity to get them the benefits that they need. And so we'll take a good look at how we will be staffing particularly the plunge and library and some of the other departments that have part-time employees. As Ben mentioned before, we're looking at working with, to get a presentation for the suspended sidewalk. My thought is to try to do that Facebook Live. People then can watch that later, and they can make comments or ask questions that we'll try to answer. We are getting to the point, we want to get that agreement. If we are, if the council is going to sign that, we want to get that voted on at the next meeting. And so I encourage you, if anyone on the council does have any questions about our agreement and the sidewalk design, please don't hesitate to ask. As Misty read, we do have a new council that will be coming on. And my last week has been kind of hectic. I'm going to, I guess, officially and publicly announce that I've been asked and have said yes to officially be a candidate for the South Dakota Senate seat here in District 30. I've been approached by several people, and I think we're at a place where we're going to be in a recovery mode in the next year. And one of our District 30 is a big tourism area from Wall to New Underwood, through parts of Rapid City, Mount Rushmore, Keystone, Hill City, and Custer, and certainly here in Hot Springs. And I think it's important that we have a voice that is ensuring that we get a fair shake at getting a hand up to get back on our feet. And I felt that that was something that was worth fighting for, and that's one of the reasons that I allowed myself to go out and hustle 50 signatures on a petition. The other thing that I think is important for our area is Ellsworth Air Force Base and the B-21 bed down. And I think that's a very excellent opportunity for us to gain some technical businesses, technology businesses within our area, along with, that usually goes with the new weapons system, along with helping our South Dakota School of Mines. They do have programs that would be able to fit in and be able to assist industry in that area. So those are things that we want to look forward to. We know this pandemic is going to be over, and Misty said we're going to survive, we're going to be better for it in the end. And so I would ask you to keep your head up, and we'll be looking ahead, and along the way, we'll make wise decisions based on the circumstances that we face. And again, I appreciate all of your input, and I appreciate the public's ability to be in compliance with that, what we're asking. With that said, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
It moved and seconded, we adjourned. I assume there's no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.